Meeting of May 17, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark, would you just start us off, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that will get us to the approvals of minutes of May 3, 2022. If everybody, please, take a look and review them. And if you are satisfied, there's no further discussion, errors, omissions, motion, please. Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of May 3, 2022.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item four is recognition as a mayoral proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is taking place May 15 through the 21st, 2022. Kathryn, would you please read that in the record?
Certainly. National Public Works Week, May 15 through 21st, 2022, ready and resilient. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are a vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Oak Creek, and whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public work professionals who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children in Oak Creek to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works first responders and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas, celebrated annually since 1960, the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas I, Daniel J. Bukavich, do hereby designate the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Due to the 17th day of May, 2022.
Thank you, Kathryn.
Welcome.
And I don't see our Director of the DPW here, so I'll just put it out. Council members, any comments? Again, our DPW is really the backbone of the city here. It is really right to at least recognize them for this week. Infrastructure is critical. Everything from our DPW to our water has pretty much been spelled out for us, and believe me, if those functions stopped, you guys would notice right away. They are just essential, always behind the scenes, doing their job, day in, day out, in, week out. I can't say enough about our DW, our Department of Public Works, whether it's a snowstorm, whether it's taking care of parks, grass, whether you have the most award-winning water in the country, Oak Creek has it all, so. Please, take a second if you see them out in public, give them a wave, give them a thank you, and acknowledge their hard work, because they ask for very little, and they deliver a lot, so. With that, we will move on to the next one. That is also a mayoral proclamations, and that is congratulations to St. Stephen's Catholic Church, recognition of their 175th anniversary. Kathryn.
Congratulations to St. Stephen Catholic Church and recognition of their 175th anniversary. Whereas the early footprints of St. Stephen's Catholic Church can be traced back to the early 1840s, when a handful of settlers from Cologne, Germany, cleared land 90 miles north of Chicago and five miles west of Lake Michigan. And whereas in this new community named New Colon or New Cologne, a privately owned small log cabin was used for celebrating Mass once a month. And whereas upon the vision to build their own church, landowners contributed logs towards construction, with the first church being completed in the fall of 1847, and a school and rectory added in 1850. And whereas in 1884, parishioners voted to build a new church using French Gothic designs, and whereas on May 13, 1908, tragedy struck the new building when a fire broke out and gutted the church, leaving only walls remaining. And whereas parishioners rebuilt, and in doing so salvaged what they could, adding new beautifications such as art glass windows and decorations for the altar. But the structure was short-lived, as a second fire struck on January 1, 1926, destroying the church and the rectory. And whereas while some parishioners wanted to disband, others displayed the same courage as the first settlers, and in 1927, 85 families began rebuilding yet again. And whereas the new church captured the German flavor of their homeland with altar and sanctuary features carved out of Slovenian white oak and hand-carved railings, lecterns, and sedia created from imported black walnut. Some of these carvings, so exquisite and detailed, were exhibited at the Chicago's World Fair in 1939 and remain a part of the church and chapel to this day. And whereas St. Stephen's Golden Jubilee was celebrated in 1897, and forward-thinking to its centennial celebration to be held in 1947, new floors, partial relief oak carvings of the Stations of the Cross, and a shrine of St. Joseph were added. And whereas on Palm Sunday, April 8, 1979, tragedy struck a third time when an arsonist broke into the rectory and set fire to the basement stairway. While extensive smoke damage was suffered, the rectory and church were saved from total destruction. And whereas, with the increased airport expansion surrounding churches, were forced to close and combine membership, but St. Stephen's chose to rebuild in Oak Creek, breaking ground on their new location on West Oakwood Road in October 2008. And whereas settling into its new home in Oak Creek, the new St. Stephen Church was formally dedicated to Bishop Richard Pilpa on November 22, 2009. And whereas having withstood the test of tragedy in time, and like the early settlers, despite setbacks and adversaries, the parishioners of St. Stephen's have continued to join together overcoming many challenges with a spirit and sense of pride that cannot be stopped. And whereas in 2022, the church will celebrate the 175th anniversary with the Most Reverend Richard Pilpa, Auxiliary Bishop Emeritus of Milwaukee and Concelebent Reverend Robert Calcollo officiating. My apologies. And whereas the city of Oak Creek has benefited tremendously from the valuable contribution of St. Stephen Catholic Church to the growth and stability of the entire community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, hereby congratulate St. Stephen Catholic Church on their 175th anniversary.
Thank you, Kathryn. Is there anybody here from St. Stephen's that'd like to comment on anything? Not? Counsel?
Hi, Mayor. I'll just say, thank you for doing this proclamation. This is our home parish. One thing I'd like to note is if you're ever at St. Stephen's, take a look around, you'll see that as when St. Stephen's relocated to Oak Creek, the whole interfacing is all intermixed with pepper, with stuff from the old and the new. So there's a lot of old history and heritage, with tradition, but in a new setting. One thing, too, when you're there is if you look at the cornerstone that's on display, if you look at the back of it, it's all black, and that's from the fires that it's withstood. So it just shows the character of that cornerstone.
All said, Chris, I'm very familiar with St. Stephen's, too, having been a member there when they were actually at the original church. The original church really had a lot of European design to it, as the proclamation, Chris stated, and it was absolutely a gorgeous venue to be at. And unfortunately, the congregation, as well as the land expansion around the airport, kind of brought them, fortunately for Oak Creek, right here into Oak Creek in 2008. We've been very fortunate to have them part of our faith community here, and they're a shining example of really the power of faith, face of tragedy that the congregation has faced, church has taken on over the years, and they provided countless members of the community aid and effort. They conduct our food pantry every year, not every year, they do it all the time, actually. But again, they are constantly out within the community quietly, just accomplishing the mission of what faith-based communities do. So it's my pleasure to, you know, recognize them for 175 years. My hope that they'll be here another 175 beyond that. My hope that I'll be here to give that to them, too. Just kidding. But seriously, it's quite an accomplishment to achieve that. We have some longstanding faith communities, faith-based communities that have been here that long, and that's really what helps build communities. So again, on June 5, if you have the time, please go celebrate their 175th anniversary. Representatives from Oak Creek will be on hand, so. And that is it for item five. So moving on, we're going to get to our public hearings and the business of the day. Item six is consideration of a request for Superior Air Ground Ambulance Service for an amendment to an existing conditional use permit to allow private emergency service in a facility within a portion of an existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at 140 East Rossin. Kathryn, would you please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Kenneth Slinker Superior Air Ground Ambulance Service for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow a private emergency service facility within a portion of the existing multi-tenant industrial building on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Kenneth Slinker Superior Air Ground Ambulance Service. Property owner is East Rossin Ave LLC. Legal description there follows, and the date of notice, April 20, 2022.
Doug?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And the first of several public hearings this evening is the amendment to the conditional use permit affecting the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. And this latest amendment would allow for a private emergency service facility, a private ambulance service, to operate out of that location. Now, those types of facilities are a conditional use in the M1 Manufacturing Zoning District, and council will recall that this property, which is a flex industrial development, has several different conditional use permits or amendments attached to that, from, you know, physical therapy to indoor recreation, so there's a number of them attached to that. This latest request for superior ambulance, they'll provide basic advanced critical care transport for facilities within Milwaukee County, leasing approximately 11,500 square feet for offices, training, and conference rooms. So it's a little bit like a fire station in the sense that there'll be staff 24/7, as it's not, they're serving private functions, private clients, but they will be present 24/7. Ambulances would be stored within the garage and deployed from that location, but would be serviced off-site. During a review of the site and building plans back in previous iterations of the building, there was a thorough review of the parking requirements and analysis, as is the case for any additional conditional use permit amendment or any changes to the plan. Staff feels that the parking provided for that building, and remember that the building was built on speculation, so we didn't know the users at that point in time, but we still feel that the parking is adequate to service that need. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit at the meeting of April 12. This, again, is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to this conditional use permit for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue, you approach the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments. The council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make the first call. Anybody wishing to speak, approach the podium, name and address, please.
Mike Pihowski, 251 East Rossin Avenue, either across the street from the St. John's property. I have several concerns with this proposal. One thing that was just brought up was about the parking of this. Yes, there is ample parking, but the entrance and exit to this property is very restricted. They have a 10-foot dirt wall on Rossin Avenue, that is, you're driving to exit the property, you can't see Rossin Avenue, and the people coming into this facility can't see you. Also, the other issue was with the possibility of sirens and lights being used at this facility. I have talked to Superior Ambulance Ken, and he was gracious enough to bring his ambulance to the property, because there would also be testing of the sirens on a daily basis behind the property. He brought his ambulance there, and he tested it, which wasn't a real big deal, it was just like a little squawk. So he did do that for us, and, you know, he brought the ambulance there. My issue is with that, because by law they cannot be restricted from turning their sirens and lights on, that they could do this anytime they wanted. They stated that they wouldn't do it unless they left the property and went as far as Howell and Taylor, but that doesn't mean, the question I had is that we have a special needs school there, we have autism school there, we also have other businesses there that use this driveway, and I said, what happens if we have a school bus or something coming in this property, and cars are exiting, and they can't get out, and you are leaving on emergency call, what are you going to do? Are you going to sit there, or are you going to start using your horns and sirens so you can get past all these people? So that was one of the issues I had. The other one is, I don't understand that if they're going to put 12, a maximum of 12 ambulances inside this building. Now, inside this building is where the special needs childrens are, and these children are in wheelchairs and very disabled, and where else in the state or in this city do you have 12 emergency vehicles, whether they're fire trucks, or ambulances, or vehicles like this in the same building, right next to this, parked right next to this school? If there was a, each ambulance has at least 50 gallons of gasoline in it, so you're looking at 600 gallons of gas, they have lithium batteries, they have oxygen tanks, if there ever was a fire or an incident, how would you evacuate these children and get them out of there? Plus, if you look at this, there is only one entrance and one exit to this building, to this property. People would be trapped. I don't understand why this would be a wise choice to allow this service in this kind of setting. This wasn't zoned for this. This was zoned as a light industrial area, and all the businesses that St. John has asked for already have asked for, you know, to redo the zoning, for, you know, for the conditional use permits. They have yet to use this property for what we were told when we went through the process of allowing, or I shouldn't say I didn't allow it, but as, when we went through the process, when they wanted to rezone this property, it was a farm, and allow St. John's to be it. St. John's agreed to this type of zoning that he had, and every time he comes to here, he wants to up it, he wants to change the zoning so he can allow different businesses in here. So this, to me, is not, is a very bad setting, it's not a good fit for that area. This type of service, whether, just like your fire trucks and fire stations, should be in a standalone building. You shouldn't allow having 10 or 12 vehicles like this in a school, and that's basically what you're doing. Plus, there's, next to them, there's other businesses in this. So like I said, this is my objection to this. I think it's a very bad choice, and I'm not against, not against an ambulance service in Oak Creek, I'm not against Superior Ambulance and against St. John's. What I am against is what they want to do in this particular setting, and I think it's a poor choice, and it's basically a scary choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Second call for the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium, name and address. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak on the public hearing? Now close the public hearing, and go on to item seven, which is consideration of the amendment of conditions and restrictions, ordinance number 2984 for the physical and... Am I?
That's correct, I was just kind of listing the other conditional uses that are there.
Physical and occupational therapy clinic, behavior treatment service clinic, recreation facilities, outdoor recreational facilities, private emergency services on the property at 140 East Rossin. Apologize for that, got lost in my mind there. So would the applicant like to come up, say anything on behalf before we go to the council? I know we went through this at planning quite a bit, I know there was some talk about, let's start with the testing of the sirens, because you guys were going to do that off-site or somewhere. We know it's not a big deal and the whole thing, so just...
Sure. Martha Augustine, thank you for your time this evening. Yeah, thank you for considering us as one of your neighbors. The testing of lights and sirens is done once in the morning when the crews start their shift. It's literally a blip of the sirens, so it takes about a second or less, so that's all that would be happening with the testing of sirens. Any other questions that you have, I'm more than happy to answer.
While we have you up here, again, you're somewhat governed by state law, depending on the type of call you have, it's impossible to say day-to-day, hour-to-hour, what kind of call you're going to have, but the frequency that you'd have to use those sirens?
I would say about 5% or less of our calls. The majority of our calls do not require lights and sirens, and the majority of the time that we're using those lights and sirens, it would be between facilities. Because we're transporting patients that are already in a healthcare facility, we very rarely need to respond with lights and sirens to that healthcare facility. It would just be while transporting patients between facilities.
Any questions for Martha? Anybody have questions, comments on this while we have her up? There's a few people that can help with some of Mike's questions answered. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I simply have comments, I don't have any questions for Martha. I appreciate her coming up and explaining the sirens issue.
Okay. If you want to go ahead with your comments, otherwise I was just going to call up, going to see if Chief Kresic would come up and just kind of address the gas explosion potential of having vehicles within a garage. Sorry to put you on the spot, Chief, but you're probably the best authority to answer that.
Good evening, Mike Kresic, representing the Fire Department. So from the perspective of the hazard in that facility, the fire risk, it's really no different than any other facility when you evaluate the risk that's going to be placed inside it. So during the planning process, Assistant Chief Havy will take a look at the current building systems, how they match up with that occupancy type, and then we would adjust as appropriate. There are some similarities to a fire station as far as what's stored in there, so it's not unheard of that these type of occupancies do take place. You know, certainly, the consideration would be what it's next to in a strip mall type setting as opposed to a standalone fire station. So certainly that would be a consideration, that will be vetted during the permitting process and by the Fire Department as the project moves along.
So if they're not in compliance with fire and our codes, no occupants?
That is correct. That is the standard throughout the community.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Doug, there was a question on zoning and how this was zoned in the first place. You mentioned it was a flex, can you give a greater explanation of that?
Absolutely, and the property was initially started off, and I believe it was a limited manufacturing zoning, and as is the case with a lot of developments in Oak Creek and elsewhere around the region, around the country, it's developed on a speculative basis. You don't have necessarily tenants that are already lined up to go in the building, so you really don't know what's going to go in there. Typically, you would see more manufacturing-type operations, warehousing, distribution, things, some small businesses, and there are some like that in there, and there will be others that will kind of join that roster of tenants. But it just so happens that, given the unique nature of this development, it's attracted somewhat of some tenants that aren't quite manufacturing, but they aren't quite retail. So this kind of demonstrates that this really fills the space in between, and I think it's a good product in order to do that. So, I mean, I think when you're talking about the impacts, and that's what really dominance of zoning is, you're talking about the impacts, I think they're consistent with what you would find in any manufacturing.
Thank you, Doug. And then just the last one, just, I'm sorry, Counsel, I don't mean to take this away, but kind of wrote his questions down. Vision triangle. Matt, I guess I'm going to ask you to comment on that. When we laid that out, I know that wall specifically went in there to block some of the business and signage, but can you comment on the vision triangle, not just for the ambulance, but for any vehicle going in and out of there? What's the hazard?
I think the concern more stated by the resident was the larger soil area that's just to the west of the entrance or east of the entrance. So typically, you'll look at vision, and it's 14 feet from the travel lane. We were up there looking, I think, in the perspective of where I was there at the time, there was no vision issue as far as being able to see down Rossin, north and south. We didn't dive into it any further than just on-site, so if we wanted more in-depth look, we'd probably talk to the county, being that they hold the maintenance of that road, Rossin, but we could go further, so directed as far as surveying, getting more actual data.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to the council, and I'll start with First District, Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with everything that the resident, Mike, stated tonight. We talked earlier, we talked tonight, and bottom line is, I would welcome Superior Ambulance to the city, but I agree that this location is not a good fit. It would be best in either one of vacant area in one of the industrial parks, or a standalone business for the various reasons. I think I'm particularly baffled at the fact that we have an LM1 building there, and looks like every one of them that's gone in there so far has needed a conditional use permit because it isn't meeting the zoning that it was intended for. So I know that Doug and others were going to get with St. John's and see about what their vision for that property is, and if the whole property needs to be rezoned, but that's down the road. But I think the entrance, with one entrance, if that whole place is eventually rented out, I think one entrance is problematic. I can't, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a citizen that drives down that road all the time, and I think there are some things that both, maybe engineering, and maybe the Plan Commission got wrong on this particular issue. I'm particularly concerned with having ambulances in a facility that has recreational facilities, support services, occupational therapy for autistic children. I don't know, I'm not a doctor, but autistic children have, you know, sight, sounds, issues, and who's to say that the ambulance doesn't go by with their lights on for whatever reason, or they do something down there and it triggers something in just one autistic child that's there? I do have issues with 12 ambulances being inside a building. Now, it may or may not meet the Fire Department's approval, but Chief Kresic said this would be something that's going to be done after the fact. I think that should have been done before the fact. We should have been talking about this at Plan Commission or wherever, prior to talking about doing this, well, after we, you know, well, let's... about doing this, well, after we, you know, well, it's passing, and then see what's in the meat of it. If, it's like a fire station, and you've got all this hazardous stuff in there, lithium batteries, oxygen, gasoline, whatever the case may be, in a standalone building like a fire department, it is what it is. Just as dangerous, but it's a standalone building. Here it is adjacent to other occupied buildings that have, as I said before, special needs, children's, and all the other services that are there in what I would call a craptacular entrance to a facility. If the fire department needs to get in because there's some sort of issue there, and you've got nervous parents wanting to get out, and you've got all this other stuff going, that's going to be a traffic jam right there at that entrance. So I have a whole, that's one of the issues. So while I, like I said, I would welcome them in the city, but I don't support them going into this location.
Thank you Steve. Comments? Rich?
Alderman Dukniak, Third District, and Doug, maybe you can help me on this. As I see on the screen, there are four shaded areas of the building farthest to the right. Are those the buildings that are, the rooms that are currently occupied?
Those would be the units that would, those would be the units that would be leased by Superior, yes.
So they'd be, in essence, renting four parcels, is that correct?
It's not parcels, they're units within a...
Four units?
Yes.
And then are the current tenants, are they immediately north and south of those four proposed buildings that Superior, or units that Superior is looking to lease?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to the specifics with that. I think that the building owner would need to answer those questions.
Because as I saw that graphic, there is open space farther on the north end of the building or to the south. Is there the possibility of placing them farther away from where these other services are currently taking place?
Again, that would be something for the building owner to comment on, I mean...
Is the building owner here?
I don't know.
Would you like to come on up? We'll need your name and address please.
My name is Greg Fax, I am a partner in St. John Properties and the ownership entity East Rossin. I live in the town of Sun Prairie, Wisconsin. As far as your question, the spaces on either side of the proposed space for Superior Ambulance, they are leased. The tenant on one side is a light manufacturer, and the tenant on the other side is in transportation and logistics, a trucking company. There's no other place to put them, everything else is leased that would be of the size that they need. And I'd like to address too, the discussion of these autistic children, they're not adjacent at all to this space. One is in the building, but it's 90 to 120 feet away. And they're well aware of this prospective occupant being Superior, and none of them chose to come today to voice any concern.
Any questions?
Lisa Marshall, District 4. For the planning question, did, were any of the other occupants at the planning commission? It doesn't look like it's...
I can speak for the first meeting, Greg and Chris will have cover the second time they came through, I wasn't there, but the first time, no, there was nobody from the complex that came. As far as addressing, and just I want to throw this out there, Alderman Kuzakowski talked about the fire hazards and what have you, and when we go through planning, it meets all acceptable codes and what have you for the use, just as Chief Kresic said, so that's a blanket statement, we're covered by all codes, so we don't get into the nitty-gritties of how high the firewall should be, blah, 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 because that's built into the planning of whatever the tenant uses.
I mean, whether it's a facility such as this, or any manufacturing facility, there are specific fire protection requirements based on occupancy and based on what's taking place within the space. And that's not uncommon, I mean, as a matter of fact, that's the way it works, is that depending on the occupancy, when you go through that review by our fire department, in this case we have a third-party reviewer that does that, and they identify what is necessary for the space, and you have to, if you want occupancy of the space, that purpose, you have to meet those requirements.
Doug, in that process of the planning commission, the other businesses in this facility would have been notified, because they're within the 300...
Well, we notify the property owners, so I guess it's up to the property owner to identify their tenants, because again, these are not properties, it's all one property under the ownership of Mr. Fax and his company.
So did you notify them?
We had discussions with them, yeah, the ones that we knew would have a sensitivity.
Yeah, I got just clarifications just on some of the stuff that came out of the planning commission minutes. Can you clarify, there's, there was a, somebody cited a number of 12 ambulances parked inside the building. I read four vehicles at any one time, or multiple, twice I read that. So is it four vehicles parked inside the building?
I can't speak to that, I wouldn't be the occupant, but I think the plan would be for them to have more than four. There's certainly room for more than four.
And then, I probably have to have...
Yeah, we'll have Martha come up and clarify that.
That's all I have for you.
Chris, anything while building owner...
I was just going to mention that we did talk about a lot of this at planning, and that the concerns with the different autistic business that was there was talked about. Plan commission really did, after a lot of thought, supported what was going on with this, although they weren't a little concerned with some of the, with the autism business, but it's not in the same, it's because of the distance, we felt actually after thinking it through, it's okay where it is, because where this is, the other part of it is, is that the, you have to remember, it's not going to be like it's a city fire department where they're working on their trucks and they've got them all out, then they're, you know, working on them throughout the day in the parking lot. You know, they have spots for them inside the building, and the work and thing that would be done to it would be all inside of the building. So I think we have to really kind of think through the thought process of their business plan, and, you know, as long as they've notified the other neighbors in the building, then we should all be good to go.
Thank you Chris. Greg?
I'll just add it on, in planning as well, we did discuss the sirens quite a bit. We brought up the possibility of engaging the sirens at a further distance from the building, and while the city can't really regulate that and mandate them not do that, they did offer that they potentially could use some type of internal policy to have people not engaging right outside the building. But again, it sounds like very little of their calls, they would be leaving the business with the sirens on, it would be a more, while in transport, they would turn them on. I know we also discussed the number of ambulances, I'll let them answer the actual number, but I do believe I remember them talking that they use some type of a staging strategy where they're not all parked in the business waiting to be deployed to wherever they need to go. They stage in various areas, wherever the number of calls are coming from, so they're closer to respond if needed. But again, I'll let them answer that and speak for themselves.
Could we have Superior, Martha, would you come up again please? Once again, name.
Martha Augustine. Yeah, so we are looking at a minimum of four ambulances to a maximum of eight. That is, that's kind of our final plan there. You are correct, we are, we deploy most of our ambulances to whatever areas have a higher call volume, so very rarely do we have ambulances sitting at the property waiting for calls to come in. And I apologize, I forget the other thing that you needed me to speak on.
Sirens.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. So we do have, we do have internal policies in place in other areas of the state where we do not engage our lights and sirens, because we do have a building and that is in close proximity to a residential area. So we are more than happy to put anything in place that the city would like us to as far as an internal policy on wanting to engage lights and sirens.
Martha Alderman Dukniak, Third District, so I just want to be clear on this. So then there would be no reason to have lights and sirens on because you have no patients at your location, correct?
The majority of the time, there are certain situations mandated by the state health department that we would have to respond, but because of the type of call volume that we take, the majority of our actual responses from the building will not be under lights and sirens.
Do you act more as a transport company?
Correct.
Any other questions? Ken?
I noticed in your application letter, Alderman Lorik brought this up too, you have the staging tactic or staging protocol for, so your vehicles don't necessarily, probably may, not very often actually deploy from your facility there, right, if you deploy from somewhere else.
That is correct. They'll come in to report for their shift, make sure they have the proper equipment that they need, do their quick siren and light check, and then they will deploy for the rest of their shift.
Yeah, Danny, this strikes me as, you know, we didn't really envision, I thought it was kind of the genesis of the whole business condo kind of concept, you don't necessarily know what... Planning commission apparently fairly thoroughly vetted the way it looks to me from the minutes and stuff that I've read, a unanimous vote in favor of the use, conditional use. As Chief Kresic said, his group would be obviously reviewing the plans and things along the lines as they actually progressed, potentially opening a business if we saw fit, granting them the conditional use permit. And the other thing is that the fact that the existing tenants there, it's just like we ran into with rehab conflicts with residential stuff in new developments next door. Just because you're there first, you don't get a beat over that. Take them one by one, on their merits, and you go forward. From that standpoint, seems to be a legitimate use of the property and would look to be a probably value-added business.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will look for a motion on seven. Lorik moves to adopt ordinance number 3037, amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2984 for a physical and occupational therapy clinic, a behavioral treatment services clinic, indoor recreation facilities, outdoor recreation facilities, and a private emergency services facility on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
No.
Lorik?
Aye.
Moving on, item eight, another, excuse me, public hearing. Consider a request submitted by PPG Industrial, Inc., and Sunvest Solar, LLC for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow a solar farm on the property at 10600 South 13th Street. Catherine, please read that in.
Certainly, public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Joe Ellinger, PPG Industries, Inc., and Bill French, Sunvest Solar, LLC for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow a solar farm on the property at 10600 South 13th Street. Applicant is Joe Ellinger, PPG Industries, Inc., and Bill French, Sunvest Solar, LLC. Property owner is PPG Industries, Inc. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 20th, 2022.
Doug?
Thank you once again. This is an amendment to the conditional use permit that, under which PPG is operating a property at 10600 South 13th Street. This is the property that's immediately north of their facility that they own, and they are proposing to lease that to We Energies in partnership with Sunvest Solar for an eight-acre solar farm. Essentially, these are eight foot eight tall solar panels, 17 rows, they'd be about less than nine feet tall. There wouldn't be any additional employees, there wouldn't be additional lighting, it's just, it's an area that they've been utilizing as, essentially as a buffer between their parcel, their facility, and the residential area to the north, that'd be repurposed for a solar farm with a 30-year lease. With that in mind, and based on that understanding, the plan commission did at their meeting of April 12th recommend approval of this amendment to the conditional use permit to allow for a solar farm at the property at 10600 South 13th Street. This is a public hearing, would ask that anyways, any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit? You please approach the podium, give your name and address, proceed to address your questions or comments. Comment, council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you Doug. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anybody wishing to speak? Our third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, name and address. We'll now close the public hearing on eight and move to nine, which is consideration of the ordinance amending the conditions and restrictions to allow for the solar farm on the property at 10600 South 13th Street. Open it up, questions, comments from council? Seeing none, we did talk about this at planning, it was pretty straightforward, I think Doug summed it up best, it was on PPG property, 30-year lease. We Energies, it's really part of our new infrastructure plan here to go green, and no neighbors came to planning to ask any serious questions, anything like that, it will be a secure site. That's all I really have about that from planning. Greg, Chris, anything to add?
Thank you.
I think one of the only concerns that I remember from planning was reflection to nearby residents. These are stationary, they do not move, and they are facing a way, the residents are quite a distance, but they are facing in the opposite direction.
Other questions or comments? Motion please.
We'll move to approve ordinance 303, amending conditions and restrictions in ordinance 1878 to allow for a solar farm on the property at 10600 South 13th Street.
Kuzakowski? Roll call.
Alderman Marshall? Aye. Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Okay. Item 10, again, public hearing, consideration of a request by Central State Tower, VLLC Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, for a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications pole and compound facility on the property at 2509 West Drexel. Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Central State's Tower VLLC and Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, for a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications pole and compound on the property at 2509 West Drexel Avenue. Applicant is Central State's Tower VLLC and Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Property owner is Hoffman Storage ILLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 20th, 2022.
Thank you Catherine. Doug?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting conditional use permit for a 145-foot tall wireless telecommunications monopole with an additional five-foot lightning rod and associated equipment at 2509 West Drexel Avenue. Wireless telecommunication, excuse me, facilities are a conditional use permit in the zoning district, and they are regulated by state statute. The city is reviewing this under the terms of our conditional use permit application, but the applicants are proposing a roughly 70-by-80 square foot, 70-by-80 foot area accessed by a 35, 30-foot wide easement off of Drexel Avenue. You can see by the location map on the screen before you, a very deep property. So the tower itself would probably be approximately 800 feet south of Drexel Avenue, accessed by an easement with a gravel driveway. accessed by an easement with a gravel driveway, and the equipment would be at the foot of the tower at the southern end of that property. Upon the review of this proposal by the planning commission, it would allow for this type of use. The one thing that the planning commission and staff did point out in terms of their review of this proposal is, and you can see it kind of in the aerial photo, this is on an area property that's currently used for self-storage and storage of vehicles and equipment. That's, you know, it's not, I don't want to go into the specifics of that, it's probably not legal, it's illegal non-conforming use at best. And staff wanted to take steps to ensure that the activities on the western part of the property didn't continue to creep eastward onto this area, and as a condition of approval had recommended that the conditional use permit forbid the storage of vehicles and equipment on this portion of the property. So that is what you'll see in your conditional, conditions and restrictions pursuant to that conditional use permit. The use of the property itself for the telecommunications monopole is not something that is a concern to staff as it is, again, regulated primarily under state statute. And during their review of the conditional use permit, the planning commission did agree and did recommend to the council that the proposed conditional use permit be approved at the meetings of both March 8 and April 12 of this year. With that in mind, this being a public hearing, anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a 145-foot-tall telecommunications tower at 2509 West Drexel Avenue? Please approach the microphone, give your name and address, proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Once again, we will make three calls. This will be the first. Second call, anybody wishing to speak on a cell tower? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium, name and address. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to consideration of the ordinance approving the conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility at 2509 West Drexel Avenue. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Long. I represent the applicant's Central State's Tower and Verizon Wireless. I'm just here to answer any questions that the council may have about the proposal.
Thank you. Very nice of you to let us know. Council members? Greg? Think you got the buzzer first.
Alderman Kirkowski, sir, if you could come back, I have just one quick question.
Certainly.
I noticed in the paperwork that I had that the FAA issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation in July of 2018 that expires January 25, 2020. Is there other paperwork in this stuff that approves, that FAA has approved this?
I can tell you that the applicant did file for an extension, and I think that extension went through the summer of 2021. And then I believe they're in the process of filing for another extension now. And given the fact that nothing's changed at the airport, that this should not be an issue, and we would submit an updated one prior to filing for any permits or anything like that.
Oh, eventually that there'd be no construction or anything until FAA gave their approval.
Yes, that can't happen by law.
Thank you.
Yep.
Greg?
This is in the 2nd district. I actually haven't gotten any calls or concerns compared to the last cell tower that we saw. This is not nearly as close to a residential area as the last one was. I realize this being a utility telecommunications, there's not a whole lot that we have say in. I did bring up at the meeting requesting if there's any way to, like when I go to Vegas, all the cell towers look like palm trees. But I was kind of explained, like, doing that in this area where it would be a tower in the middle of not a whole lot of trees and things like that, it would probably make it stand out more, and it'll probably disappear a little bit more in the skyline, be a neutral gray color anyways. But that was the only thing that I raised concern of.
I would agree with your comments.
Thanks.
Hey, buddy?
Do we need to incorporate that as a receipt of the condition? Or do we assume that they're going to abide by whatever federal regulatory approval they need?
I mean, you certainly can. Again, it's very similar, in a sense, to our last discussion. I mean, there are rules you need to go through to buy the cell tower, and one of those is you need to get clearance and a determination of no air hazards from the FAA. So whether we put it in there or not, it's going to happen.
Anybody else? The only other thing we discussed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, there might be a plotted road in there. We kept it off the way enough so if a road by chance ever went in there, the easements were on there.
Sure. What the mayor's referring to is in the state's access management plan for 27th Street, and this is just a little bit further, a little bit east of 27th Street. They do call for a future street accessing the interior of these properties at that point in time. They just want to make sure that the facilities that are being planned did not take place with the proposed future right away, and they do not.
Correct. And everything is secure. It is a fenced site, and all electrical cabinets, equipment cabinets will be locked, just there for personnel to access. There's no other conversation. Motion on 11.
Lorik moves to adopt ordinance number 3039, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility at 2509 West Drexel Avenue.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Yes, aye.
And item 12, another public hearing. Consider a request by Heritage Funeral Homes for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow for a funeral parlor with cremation services within a portion of the existing building at 7625 South Howell. Catherine?
Public hearing number 4 is to consider a request submitted by Kenneth Johnson, Heritage Funeral Homes, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow a funeral parlor with cremation services within a portion of the existing building on the property at 7625 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Kenneth Johnson, Heritage Funeral Homes. Property owner, MSS Hospitality LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is April 27, 2022.
Thank you. Doug?
Thanks. I don't need to reiterate everything from the public hearing notice, but Heritage Funeral Homes is proposing to utilize this existing business, building for business office space, like backroom operations, as well as crematory services. This would actually be the headquarters for the business. There would not be any funeral services being performed on-site. Typical hours are very similar to an existing business, the business eight o'clock to five o'clock, with some minor operations occurring twenty-four hours a day. There'd be up to twenty employees at the facility during typical work hours and other two to six around the clock if need be. There really wouldn't be any modifications to the exterior of the building. All the modifications would be interior. Parking should be fine. And really, it's the latest iteration of the use for this property, which many of you may recall was the city's police station at one point in time. And then it went into a software company and apparel legal services. So it's good to see some additional utilization of this building along Howell Avenue, and a very good use, something that the staff certainly was supportive of. And after discussion with the planning commission, they, again, were supportive and recommended to your council that the conditional use permit be approved.
Thank you, Doug.
I didn't see the last part, though. Again, this being a public hearing, anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit? Please approach the microphone, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And we may be setting a record for public hearings, at least in my tenure. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Comment? Second call? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak? Okay, we will now close the public hearing on 12 and move on to 13, which is consideration of the ordinance amending the conditions and restrictions for the ordinance to allow for a funeral parlor or cremation services within a portion of the building at 7625 South Howell. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel I have to explain myself because of my upcoming, I'm going to abstain from this issue, but I need to explain why. Mark Reese, who is here from Heritage, his family and my family go back almost twenty years, way past the personal friendship issue. So, you know, it's, I have, I read everything, whether it's Heritage or any other funeral. I think it's a great idea, but I just needed to explain on the record that I'm not going to make a motion for this because of my relationship with Mark. So I've normally liked the alderman of the district makes the motion, so I've deferred to Alderman Lorik if he so chooses to make that motion.
Thank you for disclosing. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Now, we did cover this pretty extensively. Doug kind of summed it up. It's a good repurpose of the building. Heritage has been a staple of this community for twenty-five, thirty years, thirty-five years. So again, major offices are going there. The cremation facilities will go in. We talked extensively about smoke and odor and things like that. No such thing going on, actually. It's very limited use. So there's no further questions I can elaborate on? Motion, please.
Lorik moves to adopt ordinance 3040, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2253 to allow a funeral parlor with cremation services within a portion of the existing building on the property at 7625 South Howell Avenue.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Abstains.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Good luck. Gets us to item 14. That is consideration of a request by the Target Corporation for an amendment to the existing planned unit development to allow for an additional sign on the Target building at 8989 South Howell. Catherine?
Public hearing number 5 is to consider a request submitted by Matthew Flansburgh, Target Corporation, for an amendment to the existing planned unit development to allow for an additional sign on the Target building on the property at 8989 South Howell Avenue. Applicant is Matthew Flansburgh, Target Corporation. Property owner, Target Corporation, 8989 South Howell Avenue only. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 20, 2022.
Doug?
Thank you. Maybe you can keep this one very simple. The only reason why this PUD is amended is to allow for one additional wall sign for the Target at 8989 South Howell Avenue to identify the pickup area, the drive-up area. A little bit unique in the sense that typically council wouldn't be taking a look at something this detailed, but when the original planned unit development for Target was put in place, there was a maximum established quota on signage, and this was not included. So unfortunately, this did need to come back through a public hearing to get the additional language in there which would allow for this. This, again, being a public hearing, if anybody is here that has any questions or comments regarding proposed changes to the planned unit development, I encourage them to please approach the podium, give their name and address, and proceed to address their questions or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And once again, we will make three calls. This being the first, anybody wishing to speak on the Target sign? Second call? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak on the PUD amendment for the extra signage? Now close the public hearing and move on to 14, which is consideration just by the request submitted by Target for the amendment to the existing PUD to allow for the additional sign on the Target building at 8989 South Howell.
Alderman Dukniak, 3rd district. And yep, Doug, I'm going to keep this very quick. I read with great interest. Planning Commission minutes, typically theirs are pretty detailed and involved. I think the minutes of the discussion on this was about two sentences. So no issues with planning commission, no calls from any 3rd district residents, and Target is within the 3rd district, so I have no issues or problems with this change.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? No. Again, just another retailer adapting to the new environment they're in for retail. And it's our pleasure to help you along, so if there's no further questions, comments, motion, please.
Dukniak moved to approve ordinance number 3041. That's amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2930 relating to signs allowed on the Target building and the planned unit development affecting the property at 8989 South Howell Avenue.
Lorik, 2nd. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item 16, again, is a public hearing. Consideration of a proposal by CR Devco LLC to amend the official map for a portion of the northeast, northwest quarter of Section 19. It's a mapped, unimproved right-of-way affecting the properties at 2411, 2345, 2321, 2301, 2231, and 1933 West Putes, 8843 South 13th Street, 8950 South 20th, 8810, and 8864 South 27th Street, and last but not least, 2320 West Gray's Lane. Catherine, you want to read that into the official record?
Certainly. Public hearing number 6 is to consider a proposal by CR Devco LLC to amend the official map for a portion of the northeast and northwest quarter of Section 19, mapped, unapproved right-of-way, affecting the properties at 2411, 2345, 2321, 2301, 2231, and 1933 West Putes Road, 8843 South 13th Street, 8950 South 20th Street, 8810, and 8861 South 27th Street, and 2320 West Gray's Lane. Applicant is CR Devco LLC. The legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 20, 2022.
Thank you. Doug?
Thank you. The final public hearing of the evening is an official map amendment for the properties as listed in the council report. I won't repeat those. Just to start, this is an official map amendment, I understand, and the council should be aware that there is a pending rezoning and planned unit development for a residential development as part of this proposal. But the proposal before you this evening for the public hearing is an amendment to the official map for this area. The streets that you see in kind of the dark red, those are all officially mapped streets. And testing my sense of history here, I think back around 1996 or so, when the utilities were being put in place for the water tower, the then owners of the property worked to develop a street pattern that would allow for the residential development of this very irregularly shaped property. And that's, you can kind of see it in the dark, darker, bolder black line there. The streets that are shown in red were the result of a study committee that was put in place back in the mid-'90s, and the zoning for this area was put in place based on that street pattern. Now, that was quite some time ago, and the street pattern didn't necessarily reflect the environmental conditions, especially on the western part of that property. Now, fast forward to 2022, there is some interest in developing primarily the eastern one-third of this property, and as part of that, the official map is being proposed to be amended to include only that area. And I understand you can't follow my cursor, everyone, but there's a cul-de-sac that would extend south from Apple Creek Drive along the existing public sanitary sewer and water to service the proposed CR Devco development to the south and the east. The western two-thirds of that is not proposed to be developed at all as part of this development. But again, this is part of the, the public hearing is for the official map amendment. So all those roadways that you see in red that would have been, if developed, would have been public roadways, those would be eliminated as proposed from the official map. The only areas that would remain on the official map is the public street cul-de-sac coming south from Putes Road, which would provide access to the CR Devco development. And there is a small area at the northern end of South 20th Street that would be used for the completion of that cul-de-sac, that turnaround. Now, a very important part of the discussion regarding-
Discussing.
Well, I'm saying the only one who would is benefiting is this developer.
And he does have a right, he owns the property to make the request.
He doesn't own it yet.
Okay.
He told us he does not own it.
And maybe, let's, let's, let's not talk about the development, let's talk about the road pattern. And you're absolutely right, I mean, if someone were to come in and propose to develop those properties, that they would do, if they would do so in accordance with the official map, they could potentially provide access to your property. That doesn't mean that you can just come in and subdivide your property. That means you would need to participate more than likely in the development of that roadway.
Right.
Right, some additional costs. So, and you're absolutely correct, in the sense that if you wanted to maintain the ability to participate, whether it's financially or otherwise, in the development of those roadways to service the back of your property, then that's a legitimate comment, and I, you know, I would concur that, I mean, if that's the case, that there's a road pattern that allows for, for this development to happen. I, I think that staff, when we were looking at this, we were looking at it in terms of, with the known environmental conditions on that property, the likelihood of that public roadway ever being constructed in that configuration is exceedingly low. That's where staff was coming from. As a matter of fact, the, the, the potential property owner and developer, really, I, I don't know that, and I don't know if he's, they're here this evening, but they are really focusing on the eastern third of that. And I believe it was, as they had actually recommended, or were proposing a street pattern which would have preserved the majority of those roadways. It might have been slightly configured differently, but staff, again, in recognition of the fact that likelihood of those roadways ever going in, in the configuration that they are on the official map right now, is pretty low.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the second call, and I believe we have people online, so Tom, if you would, please. Um, but, let's see if we can catch you online first, sir.
Could you state your name and address for record, please? Hello?
Uh, we need volume up there, Tom.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes, hi, my name is David Wojciechowski. We own the property at twenty-three-twenty Gray's Lane. And as of now, and actually for the last seventy-plus years, this piece of, this parcel has been landlocked. And we object now to the removal of these roads that give us access to this property, which over seven decades, we have not been able to see. Um, that's why I made objection, because we, you know, these plans have been in effect, we've been here for a long time. I understand that you're saying that these roads may never come true. But instead of them never coming true, we're just eliminating them now. And like the first lady said, you have landlocked properties, which are, you know, we've been paying taxes on his property for seventy years and getting nothing out of it. So I would like this to stay the way it is and keep us and give us access. As anybody who would own a piece of property would like to actually be able to sell it, use it, do something with it other than just pay taxes for it. Thank you.
Thank you, and just a few, few questions, if, if you would. I just wanted just, for, for the council sake, uh, when you bought that, do, do you recall how that was created? Did you purchase that as, as a landlocked property?
No, we did not. It was, it was the property, the property was purchased by my father-in-law, and he owned a property that was, part of it was, it was extended all the way to Twenty-seventh Street. And they sold off, I don't know how this was allowed, but they were able to take off two parcels off of it, and now the third parcel is the twenty-three-twenty Gray's Lane, and that is landlocked. So that is something, something Oak Creek allowed to happen, and now we're ones that are suffering for it.
Yeah, typically, typically, I mean, obviously, that's not a situation that we would ever recommend that the council or the planning commission ever create a landlocked parcel. It, it happened. I, I don't know how that, that property is being valued, but I would, I would think that'd be valued based on its current condition. That's something you may want to have a discussion with the assessor about. Again, I, I mean, I go back to the fact that you're absolutely correct. I mean, that a road pattern was in place to provide future access. But I guess I'll, I'll raise the question again. If that like, access is likely not to happen, given the, what we know to be some environmental considerations on those properties, I mean, I, I, it's, it's a situation that, uh, we can keep it on the map, but that doesn't get you any closer to your goal of getting a roadway in there so that you can develop your property. Uh, it's, it's a decision that this council will need to make, and I would submit that as we go into our deliberations and discussions, there is an opportunity to, to allow to those, those future roads to remain on the western part of the property. And, uh, you know, they may be there for a long, long time. Uh, that does not obligate anyone or the city to develop those roadways. It just means that if they were to develop in the future, that's where they would go. Uh, I think that the primary consideration of, of the applicant this evening is to allow for the, the public street access with the private roadway extension to service the properties to the south and the east. And I, I believe that they are online as well, uh, and if they would like to comment on that, I would certainly welcome that. But if there's a solution that would, again, keep the, the, the road pattern, again, terminating in a, in a, in a public cul-de-sac here, and still allowing for these roadways to remain with a connection to Gray's Lane, to be fair, there would be a connection to Gray's Lane here. Uh, I think that certainly, if that's something that's of concern to those property owners, and it's legitimate, uh, I think we can certainly contemplate that as part of this official map amendment and leave those officially mapped roadways be.
That sounds fair. I just, I, I would like it to, you know, that we keep this in mind, because you are, you've been collecting taxes off us for several, for a long time. And we would like to have some kind of a benefit off of that. Some, you know, uh, a road access someplace, there's a lot of properties back there that would, I'm sure, would like to be able to, uh, have access to their landlocked areas just as well as ours. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, David. Uh, next, Tom? Is there one more? Oh, you got the applicant. Um, before we get the applicant, sir, would you like to come up? Still on the second call, I lost track.
Ricardo Olzano, Eddie nine eighty-five, South Twentieth Street. And I'd just like a little more clarification as to what's going on on Twentieth Street, please.
So, on, on Twentieth Street, it would be, it's terminated, there's a cul-de-sac there right now. It's, it's a temporary cul-de-sac. So as part of the development, should it go through, that would be finishing off into a permanent cul-de-sac that meets city's design or the closest that we can, given the, the right-of-way that we have there. And there would be, at least it's envisioned now, there would be a gated emergency access connection between Twentieth Street and the roadways within this development, such that in the event of emergency, whether it's in this development or whether it's on Twentieth Street, that there would be some second means of access to the development or the neighborhood.
Is, is the street going to be widened more? Nope, just the way it is?
Just be improvements to the end, or make it a permanent cul-de-sac.
I, I have one question. The woods, uh, it, you can just hear the echo coming out from the, for the expressway. I'm just wondering what's going to happen with the woods. I, I know that the developers are not here, but...
Um, they're, they're online and they're going to come on next, so we can, we can address that.
And actually, actually, I'd ask you to, I mean, there is an ongoing and pending rezoning application taking place. I think that'd be more, a question that would probably be posed more correctly as part of the rezoning.
Thank, thank you for that correction, Doug.
Okay, so, I mean, okay, well, later on, I guess we'll find out about that. Thank you.
As we cross it, thank you. Uh, this will be the third and final call. You wanna, Tom, do you wanna, oh, come on up, sir.
Uh, Sean Kingston, twenty-four eighty West Gray's Lane. Um, so I talked to planning commission, and I am the property owner on Gray's Lane that has easement, um, for Gray's to be connected, if that ever does come through. And that is a concern of mine for any traffic volume, for people trying to cut the corner on Pute's, um, the stoplight, that sort of thing. Um, and the other point, too, with landlocked properties behind me, if anybody's concerned, I'd be happy to purchase that property, so, thank you.
Okay. Tom, I know we have the applicant wishing to speak.
Hello?
Good evening, go ahead.
Uh, yes, this is Ryan Swingruber, two-two-eight Raymond Avenue, Barrington, Illinois. I'm, uh, the applicant representing C.R. Devco. So, a couple of things I just want to respond to, uh, on the public comments. Number one, uh, the vacation of the official street map on our property of everything to the west of, I will say, the cul-de-sac entering the site. Uh, it's my understanding, and Doug, please correct me, but, uh, that, that was a staff recommendation. At no time did the applicant ever request to vacate, um, those roads. I want to make that clear to the public, because it, it, it leads one to believe that at some time, we were proposing development there. Doug is absolutely correct. We have provided all our wetland delineation in our environmental studies. It is highly unlikely that the properties to the west can be developed, uh, at least in any efficient manner, nor have we proposed that. Our proposal to vacate the roads are everything, uh, along I-94 on the property that's being farmed. So everything, uh, in that area, thank you, Doug. And that is just to accommodate, um, you know, our site plan and our PUD that we'll be in front of you, uh, next week for. And so I want to make that clear, because, um, some of the comments have, have alluded to that we are proposing this vacation. I think number two, staff is, uh, proposing it, because they're absolutely right. Over the course of several decades, no development has taken place in the west portion of the site. Um, and, you know, not only are the, their environmental issues preventing development, but it's also the official street map. So, um, those are just two points to consider. You know, how, uh, council votes on this, uh, we will respect their opinion, because once again, we did not, uh, make an application to have that vacated. That was a staff recommendation, and, uh, um, and so that's the, the point I'd like to make. And then, uh, I, I think there was a commentary about connection to Gray's, and, uh, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but next week, we'll be in front of you again, and, and there are no, uh, connections to Gray's being proposed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions as, uh, the meeting progresses. So, thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Ryan. Um, that, I will do it just one more time, third and final call, before I close the public hearing. Okay, we'll now close the public hearing and go on to seventeen. That's consideration of the ordinance amending section six-point-zero-one of the municipal code of the City of Oak Creek, amending the official map for the portion north, northeast and northwest quarter of section nineteen map, unimproved right-of-way affecting the properties, uh, twenty-four-eleven, twenty-three forty-five, twenty-three twenty-one, twenty-three oh-one, twenty-two thirty-one, nineteen thirty-three, West Pute's, eighty-eight forty-three, South Thirteen, eighty-nine fifty, South Twentieth, and eighty-eight ten, and eighty-eight sixty-four, South Twenty-seventh Street, and twenty-three twenty, West Gray's Lane. Uh, go to the council. Uh, Greg?
Um, just one question. I, in the staff report, there's this other map that maintains some of the western roads. Is this what was submitted by the applicant?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and I guess, my question is, is there, if the western portion is, is not to be developed, there's no plan to have it developed as of now, what is the harm in leaving those officially mapped roads there? Um, if in the future it does get developed, could they not apply to have them removed at that time?
They, they certainly could. I mean, there's, there's really no harm in keeping them there. This would have been a good opportunity in recognition of what we know to be the, the circumstances on those properties at this point in time, to kind of clean that up and rectify that. Uh, certainly, if you want, and if those property owners want to defer any, uh, implementation or changes to the official map to a future date, it is not, uh, creating any, any undue impacts upon the neighborhood or the city. It can retain, it can remain there. It may not be a, a realistic depiction of what the, or an accurate depiction of what the development possibilities are, but it's not going to cause any undue hardship on the city.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Steve?
Alderman Kerkowski, First District. Uh, I think Alderman Lorick's, uh, suggestion is very valid, and I would support that, that concept that he, he proposed.
Okay. Do you say anything?
Greg, just so I can clarify, there's two page forty-three, so you're, you're talking, um, maintaining the one that has the, what, roads to the west?
Correct, forty-three with the roads to the west not blacked out.
Doug, can you clarify for me then? Your, your staff's recommendation to remove that road pattern? Just, that, that was on the basis of the fact that it's unlikely to be developed, period? Or it makes it more developable if the road pattern is not?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both. I think that the road pattern is antiquated in the sense that it really doesn't take into account what we know to be environmental corridors in that location, or, or wetlands. Uh, certainly, I mean, if that constraint weren't there, i- i- the possibility of someone might be able to come up with a, a plan which would have worked around those environmental areas would be possible. That may not be possible, given the location of those roadways. So, I mean, you're, you're right on both accounts, but it's primarily just, kind of, knowing what we know and cleaning that up to, so we have some realistic depiction of the development possibilities of those properties, not only that property, but, you know, the, the properties, quite honestly, that, that are adjacent to that, and, and I think that official maps are, are in place just for that purpose, so that, you know, you, you can't have one person, you know, change them to detriment of another. But in this case, I don't know that there is a reali- realistic opportunity for those folks to develop in accordance with that official map, uh, if, if we want to keep it there. Again, it's, it's not going to be impactful in terms of what happens to the city. It's just going to remain on the map, and it probably will to, will remain for some time.
And just to clarify too, C.R. Devco is in fact purchasing in this planned parcel one, completely?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're built, they're purchasing, as far as I understand, the entire parcel.
Um, I would just, this does fall in, uh, my district. I would be, um, in favor of leaving, uh, those streets, uh, that are officially mapped on. And they could be addressed, uh, on, on the road, I think. Um, and that would be just my opinion.
Further discussion? Okay, uh, seeing none, we're gonna look for a motion on seventeen?
Do I need to make any type of change, uh, to the motion?
So, if you would, and maybe, uh, we'll see if you want to...
Put it in the affirmative then.
Fact-check my motion building skills here. I would, uh, make the motion such that the official map to the west of the north-south dedicated public street remain intact as part of this, uh, of this motion.
Are you talking, where the X is on our...
No, I, I apologize, I don't have that exhibit on the, on the computer screen. But if, but essentially, it, it, it takes the, it makes the connection between this future public street and the cul-de-sac, right, coming south from Pute's Road, and allows for a, a future public street access west to serve a street pattern that exists on those properties.
I needed to, uh, change my motion at all?
Hold up Fred and Melissa on this one.
That's a little different, Greg, than what you, than the map that you just got shows. That includes a little bit of a left to the west.
Or the X's you're talking about.
Yeah, I think what Doug had put forth, I follow that. That's the most clear way to say it. Um, it's always nice to be able to refer to an exhibit, and I think that there's an amalgamation of the staff proposal and then the other proposal, the other page forty-three, as Alderman Gale called it, so, um...
Doug suggested something else to...
Doug, I think where we are is...
So, there's, maybe to simplify things, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm needlessly complicating things. If we were to go back to the original proposal by the applicant, and you can see it on the figure that was included in your, your council report. Again, I apologize, I don't, don't have that, that figure on the screen for everyone this evening. But it does only allow for future access from that connection to Gray's Lane. It does remove the connection between that north-south public street to Pute's Road. Uh, and, uh, I mean, that, I mean, typically, we wouldn't, uh, propose that, because it, it creates one point of access. But again, in this situation, in staff's estimation, certainly, the likelihood of, of that roadway ever being implemented is quite slim. Uh, so from that perspective, we're talking about hypotheticals on top of hypotheticals. So, in the, in that case, if that roadway pattern were ever to be implemented based on what has been proposed by the Alderman, I'm sorry, the applicant originally, uh, that would have been in violation of our rules with respect to the length of dead ends. That's why I included the language in there for that future connection to, uh, the extension of South Apple Creek Drive. I'm not sure what we're calling it. Sorry.
You've been more confused.
Made you more confused?
Yeah.
At least you didn't say approved to Doug's comment. But, um, I think that for consistency, I mean, Doug, just trying to craft this to ensure that we're accurate without omitting any properties or over-including any property references in the parenthetical there. Um, are you comfortable, for purposes of direction and implementation, so to speak, for staff?
I, I am, to the extent that if you would like to file this as Exhibit A, and attach that as part of the official map amendment, I can, we can certainly do that.
Okay. And that would be the applicant's City of Oak Creek official map amendment. Listed as page forty-three. So, um, finally, tracking back to, uh, Alderman Guzekowski, I think that it would be, if it is a motion, uh, to adopt ordinance number three-zero-four-two, amending section six-point-zero-one of the municipal code of the City of Oak Creek, amending the official map for a portion of the northeast and northwest one-quarter of section nineteen, consistent with the applicant's proposed City of Oak Creek official map amendment to be designated as Exhibit A, which consists of page forty-three for future streets.
Not all that, Chris?
As stated by our city attorney.
There, there you go.
So, so essentially, you're just, you're, the ordinance shows that you're amending the official map. It doesn't, the ordinance doesn't say what the amendment is. It references an exhibit, and this is the exhibit that you'd be referencing.
If you are comfortable with that.
I am.
This would be the exhibit, but I think originally they wanted to do that. Or am I mistaken?
No, in essence, and forgive me for trying to be proactive. We, we, we tried and take a look at the, the situation and felt there was an opportunity to clean up some, some roadways, which probably should be cleaned up. If that's not the case, and it clearly sounds like it is not, then we should go with the applicant's original proposal to amend the official map, which is consistent with Exhibit A.
Where the X is? Okay, well, on the other exhibit.
So there is a motion on the floor?
Yep, and Chris stated it, as the city attorney stated it.
Oracle, second. Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Hi.
Duke Neack?
Hi.
Marshall?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Guzekowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Thank you all for your patience, I know, I appreciate that. Okay, uh, that got us through a public hearings, getting down to new business. Item eighteen is consideration of an ordinance, number thirty-four-three, fixing the salaries and wage ranges, salaries, wages and allowances of certain full-time and part-time non-represented positions for the year 2022. Andrew, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly thought that this agenda item was going to have more discussion than the last one, so hopefully you're sufficiently worn down. Uh, we have a, we have a very sizable request for you tonight, but one, uh, that the administration, as well as the Personnel and Finance Committee, thought it was, uh, the right time to, to make. Um, before we turn it over to our Assistant Administrator Comptroller, I'd like to give and have some conversation if needed, or answer some questions from the council regarding the background in the memo. Uh, we are, uh, asking tonight to amend the salaries and wages for certain positions in the city, uh, namely dispatch, the admin support, and the staff accountant position. Um, but in that background, certainly, I express purposely what goals we have as an employer, uh, what goals I know the council has for us as an employer of choice, and an employer that works as hard for our employees as our employees do for the public. Uh, so I want to talk a little bit about that before we turn over, turn it over to Max for the actual, uh, financial analysis in, in the proposal for increasing these wages, because they're considerable. Um, and through the Personnel and Finance Committee, we had, we had a really good discussion, uh, but I think it takes a little bit of, uh, backtracking a bit to, to get us on the, on the path to discussing this. So, so the public sector, we are a business that is about providing services and not making widgets. Our human capital is our greatest asset and is a large, vast majority of our budget, as is any public sector agency, whether that be the school district, or whether that be, uh, local state government, et cetera. Uh, we typically find ourselves rather, uh, shielded or immune from macro factors in the economy and the nation, even around the globe. And we are now finding ourselves to be not as immune to the changing times with which we find ourselves in. And really, we, what we're talking about here is, uh, espousing philosophies, not, not only in gender, uh, competitive pay, but also other ancillary benefits, uh, such as time off, uh, such as flex scheduling, a work-life balance, all of the things that we know the next generation, which is now, uh, workforce values. Uh, we don't, they don't, we don't value the long-term legacy benefits as much as, uh, employees of previous generations. Uh, we, it's true, at the local level, uh, have great health insurance benefits, uh, have a fantastic defined benefit retirement here with WRS. Those are all factors that help continue the business of the city in making sure our workforce stays put, and we have the best and most qualified workforce, and we, that, that we retain them, and when necessary, attract new workforce. So, and not, not wanting to get too philosophical here, but this is a crazy time, and we are finding ourselves right up there with all other sectors in the economy, really struggling, not, not necessarily struggling, but really finding ourselves competing for talent. Uh, we have an amazing, amazing workforce here in the City of Oak Creek, uh, and we'd really like to keep it that way. And what we're identifying for you is a really potential, a, a real potential threat for disrupting that, uh, workforce. Uh, we've identified the need to look at compensation comprehensively. As in our strategic action plan, we call for a, a comprehensive compensation and classification study. We began talking with the Personnel and Finance Committee about undertaking that analysis, and, uh, for many reasons, the Personnel and Finance Committee asked us to hold off on that and really, uh, more acutely address areas of glaring need, uh, on more of a piecemeal basis. Why the background was written, uh, so comprehensively is because you're not the only people reading that background. Our workforce certainly is reading that, and we wanted to make sure to express that all of our positions are critical in the city. But with, in the absence of a comprehensive third-party study, which we haven't given up on, and we'll circle back with that Personnel and Finance Committee and the council on that in due time, we really are in a tough position from a management of appearing to assign value, uh, to various employee groups. And that's not a very comfortable position for us to be in. So we're doing our best, uh, with identifying the highest priorities, and how we did that is we really looked for, uh, backbone positions in the city. Uh, we have a very integrated workforce where everybody serves as a backbone for another department or, or division. Uh, so I don't want to minimize that collegiality. However, uh, we've identified certain positions where vacancies and other, uh, workforce disruption would significantly impact city programs and public services, or where, to be honest with you, we've identified we're embarrassingly low in terms of our compensation for these positions. So we start here with our dispatchers, we start here with our admin support, uh, and we start here with a staff accountant position, who, which has remained unfilled and unsuccessfully, uh, attempted to be, to be filled. attempted to be, to be filled, obviously with pay being a significant issue there. And we will circle back with you on other parts of our organization, namely the custodial staff and the DPW staff in short order, and there will be others. And I want to express again to the staff, we need to take a look up and down and all around, but the Personnel and Finance Committee has tasked us with being a little more surgical for the time being, and there is, there is some wisdom in that, holding off on that study. We had a lot of debate on that, however, the, the environment is changing so quickly that, as expressed by the, by the committee, it takes a long time to put one of those studies together, and it may be invalidated by the time we get around to approving it. And also with certain of these positions, you can see, we don't have the better part of a year to really take a step back and analyze before we act. So this evening, we're asking you to act, and we put together, I think, some pretty sound advice and, and methodology for addressing some of these positions. So with that, if it pleases the mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions kind of on the background, but I would turn it over to Max for the financial analysis involved.
Max, take her away.
So, thank you, Mayor and Common Council. Max Gagin, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So the first group that we looked at was our dispatchers. What we did is, we did a compensation analysis, so certain, looking at, you know, how our dispatchers are being paid relative to our peer municipalities, peers being either communities that are adjacent to us, or who have very similar operations. So those peers being Franklin, Greenfield, we do have recent in Kenosha County, very similar scope to what our dispatch does, and then South Milwaukee. And then below, you'll see the city of Oak Creek, and where our current rates are, and then what we're proposing. So our dispatch has three-tiered positions, entry-level position, and advanced-level position, and then a lead. So what you'll see is that many municipalities may just have one dispatch position, and they have ways to progress through the range, either through steps over the course of a tenure, or through a performance measurement, or a performance-based program, merit-based program. What you'll see is that of the peers, we show a minimum rate of about, on average, twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, midpoint rate, twenty-seven dollars, seventy-eight cents, about thirty-one dollars on the maximum rate. And what you can see in that second chart is where our current rates are, so we're about eleven percent low on our minimum rate, eleven percent low on our high rate, or our maximum rate, and our mid-rate's about seven percent. So that certainly creates some challenges when trying to compete for a very limited pool of talent that is dispatchers. So what our proposal is, is to have the minimum rate increased to twenty-five dollars, the mid-rate to twenty-eight dollars, and then thirty-one dollars for that maximum rate, and to see how that lays out in the salary schedule. So you can see, these are the positions in the dispatch organization, entry-level, advanced lead, and we created a salary range for each of those five positions, including the supervisory staff as manager. You'll see a minimum and a maximum proposed rate. Where we're proposing to have the actual salary of the employees in those positions be, is in the table below, so twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty-one. And you can see the salary schedule was designed intentionally, so they're not exactly at the minimum, and they're not at the midpoint, kind of in-between. And that's really to give management some flexibility as the environment continues to change. We have policies in place where management can readjust salaries within that salary range up to the midpoint, but we didn't want to also start them at the minimum point, you know, should, say, three, four, or five years down the road, the market becomes soft, need to hire someone, and we still have an ability to hire them at a lower level, if that's what the market called for at the time. And then on the bottom table, you can see where their current pay rates are, what we're proposing, and then we also wanted to show what this would look like at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, because ultimately, it's going to impact our twenty twenty-two budget, as well as our twenty twenty-three budget. So you can see what those rates are, and then the variance, you know, how much of a dollar per hour increase that is, and then the percentage increase. So again, Andrew mentioned, for some positions, relatively sizable. For the cost, the unbudgeted cost for this year is projected to be a hundred and five thousand dollars. Then what the cost would be in the twenty twenty-three budget would be two hundred and three dollars, market adjustment's about a hundred seventy-two thousand of that, the cost of living adjustment being about thirty-one thousand. And the reason we broke that out is, you know, from our long-term budget financial planning, we build in cost of living adjustments, and we have that factored in. So when we're thinking about what's the additional levy capacity we need in order to absorb this additional cost, I really look towards what that market adjustment is, because we've already built in what a cost of living adjustment is for positions in the organization. So, you know, the question on this one is, you know, how do we fund this? Given this is a pretty significant dollar amount, we wanted to look at strategy that addresses both twenty twenty-two, as well as twenty-three budget moving forward. So when we were looking at the finances, dispatch is in a special revenue fund, so it's a separate funding source from, say, the general fund, and that has fund balance and things of that nature. And what came to the decision was to utilize some of our surplus that we realized in the general fund, our main operating fund, for the year, to the tune of about two hundred seventy-five thousand. So we would transfer that into the special revenue fund. Essentially, what that will do is, as you can see, for the twenty twenty-one, it would give us a net surplus of about two hundred sixty-three thousand for the year, and it would put a fund balance, kind of like your rainy day fund, at about three hundred fifty thousand. And what that can do is, we can utilize that funding to absorb that additional cost of a hundred five thousand in twenty twenty-two, but it also gives us some flexibility on how much additional levy we would need. We would split that over a two-year instead of a one-year, and I think you saw on the staff report, the reason for doing that is with that phased-in approach, it allows more capacity for us to address other needs in the organization, whether that be cost of living adjustment, other market studies, staffing. So it was very deliberate in how we phased it in. So you can see that two hundred thousand dollar cost we saw on the last screen really phased in over two years on the tax levy, so about a hundred thousand each year. And take a step back, failed to mention, our, our anticipated surplus for the general fund is at four point three million dollars for twenty twenty-one, so two hundred seventy-five thousand is about five percent of what our surplus is. A lot of that surplus is related to the sale of the land for the Lake Shore Commons project, but we did have some other good variances as well. So yes, sizable amount of surplus that's being applied to fund these market adjustments, but overall, it was only five percent of our surplus for the fiscal year. And what this does is, it takes us to twenty twenty-four, and you'll see by that time, we'll be at a fund balance about ninety thousand, so we'll be at the starting fund balance we started last year with, about roughly eighty-eight thousand. And we're optimistic that we'll have some changes in our dispatch service environment, there are contractual agents, whether that be St. Francis or others, or if we're going alone, that once we move into twenty twenty-five and beyond, that the levy needed will be either the same as what we're projecting for twenty twenty-four, could potentially be less if we have more partners in dispatching. So the second group we looked at was our administrative support assistants, and this is a pretty unique group for Oak Creek, so I really serve as the face of our customer service for the organization, whether that be at the front counter or through the phones. And they're split up into two teams, and they really support both the internal functions like finance or HR, as well as the external functions like planning, inspection, engineering, community development. And they function very similar to like an office or administrative assistant, so those were the positions we benchmarked against at our peer municipalities. You can see where the minimum, mid, and maximum rate are, for those peers being approximately twenty dollars on the minimum rate, mid-rate of about twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents, maximum rate of twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. And you'll see for those positions, ranging anywhere from about eighteen to twenty-six percent below comps for a like position. So the proposal here is to have the minimum rate adjusted to twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, and then the mid-rate, and then you can see the max rate. The employees who are in the position would be brought up to the minimum rate, and again, that gives management some flexibility over time to address if, you know, we needed to hire or increase the rate over time of the employees closer to the mid-rate. So you'll see how that rate lays out, we're currently at about eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, where that proposal will be, and then where it would be in twenty twenty-three, and the variance amount for the twenty, for this year's budget, it's about thirty thousand dollars in costs for the mid-year implementation. We do have a vacant position, office assistant position, we also have another vacant full-time position, so we're confident we can absorb that additional cost within their budget without going over for the year. And then for twenty twenty-three, to help fund a portion of this, we do have that vacant office assistant position, it's been vacant since twenty twenty. We've really been holding on to it from a capacity purpose, as the city reorganizes, additional workload is going to go towards that staff, and just working with the manager down there. We've actually found that kind of how people conduct business with the city has really changed with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, so people got very creative and found different ways to interact with the city that's not being here in person. And additionally, as the workforce, you know, is working from home, we had to adapt manual processes to electronic, so a lot of things really got streamlined, and it has made us realize that even if there was additional workload that was taken on during the type of reorganization, we could still maintain and manage that workload without that position. So if we were to eliminate that position as part of our budget, the additional cost would be about forty-two thousand, but again, we've already factored in about ten thousand dollars in, into that, in our long-term planning purposes, so, you know, really the market adjustment would be about thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand. And then lastly, the accountant position, so as Andrew mentioned, this position's been vacant since August of last year. It was intentional, we had an opportunity for an individual to have an interim promotion to assistant comptroller, she's filling the position permanently now. We went out to recruit in January, unsuccessful in both that recruitment, as well as a more recent recruitment. With those two recruitments, we had a total of fifteen applicants, and we had, I think, four or five that met minimum qualifications for the position, which is a bachelor's degree and two years' experience. So not asking, not asking too much, you know, certainly right out of college with a little bit of experience as someone we would look for. And really digging into it deeper, you know, talking to my peers in other municipalities, you can see where an entry-level accountant position is in the market, minimum rate averaging anywhere from twenty-five dollars to twenty-eight, average being twenty-six dollars, eighty-five cents, up to a maximum of about thirty-five dollars. And you can see where our rate is, twenty-one dollars and sixty cents, we're about twenty-four to twenty-seven percent less, kind of where the market's at, and this is what we're authorized at, this is what we were advertising for. So our proposal is to increase that minimum to twenty-eight dollars, thirty-two dollars for the midpoint, and then thirty-six for the maximum rate, and anticipate if all goes well, starting salary of thirty dollars an hour, thirty-one dollars an hour, you can see kind of how that cost comes out. For this year, you know, because the position's been vacant, we absorbed that seven thousand, six, seven thousand dollars. For twenty-two and three, market adjustment would be about thirteen thousand dollars. So unfortunately, you know, it's a significant amount for a singular position, but something that we're just unable to fill for the last nine months.
Just, oh, there you go. Thank you. That's a good segue after that.
So, you know, the question is, how do we fund them? You know, for dispatch, we devised a strategy, and how do we get there? But just kind of looking at it overall, so municipalities, we're limited in how much we can increase property taxes by net new construction. So that new construction being, new buildings built, that adds value to the tax base, that generates more taxes. And based off of what we saw for our new construction growth, based off the preliminary numbers from the assessor, we believe that's going to be just shy of about three percent increase for us. So that would give us about a million dollars in capacity. That also includes, we have existing capacity in our twenty-two budget, so very fortunate to receive favorable bids on our garbage and recycling contracts, so we got about two hundred thirty thousand in the budget already. That's savings, we put it into, see at our budget workshop, so we could address things like this, or staffing. So we're kind of working from about a million dollars for next year's budget. The question is, you know, how are we going to fund both cost of living adjustments, market adjustments, or other staffing needs? So kind of laying it out for the common council, you'll see if the city were to provide a two-point-five percent cost of living adjustment for all employees, that costs about five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And you can see the three market adjustments we're speaking to today, you know, the dispatch market adjustment, a little bit lower, again, we're splitting that cost over a two-year period, so seventy thousand, thirty-two thousand, thirteen thousand. So that would allow us about three hundred thousand left in the budget to either do other market adjustments, or staffing requirements, or just other inflationary costs. And again, this is just looking at the tax levy, you know, there's other revenue sources that we're acutely aware of that could increase in the future. So as of today, this is kind of where the twenty-three budget lies, but as things change, certainly we can adjust and maybe able to accommodate more adjustments in the future.
Well, thank you, just, good segue here, because we are very, very fortunate, based on our growth, and based on decisions the common council has made the past several years, to look forward several years, whether that be our levy, debt service levy reduction strategy, the garbage and recycling award that you, you put in place, and other policy choices you've made. Last year, we had a debate on, what do we do with this additional two hundred thousand? Should it be a cop and a half, a firefighter and a half? What do we want to do with that? We held off on making that decision, and we had that capacity, which is built in that million dollars, that's in addition to the growth, the levy limit. We had that capacity because we wanted to hold off and see what other needs might come about, or talk to the public a little bit about public safety funding. I think both chiefs in the back would agree, right sizing all of the dispatch pay is probably better than a cop or a firefighter and a half. They've said that to me before, I know they're not on camera, so can speak for them a little bit. But, so, so that's, we are very fortunate. I don't, I wouldn't call us proactive, because certainly this has been an issue with these positions, and the positions you'll see in the coming meetings for a while, but I wouldn't call us reactive in that, at least we haven't seen turnover and the poaching that's going on now in the public sector. We always had an unwritten rule, you don't just pick up the phone and call somebody and say, hey, can I give you six dollars more to come work for me and do the same job? That's exactly to atty what's, what's happened, but it will continue to happen, especially for positions, for positions like this, because we're not immune, we're having talent grab and, and issues as well, as everybody, finding, finding people. So what I want the council to really view this as, is you're really casting the die for what your twenty twenty-three budget strategy is. really view this as is you're really casting the die for what your twenty-twenty-three budget strategy is. It's about our human capital. I envision that as we go down this road, that makes your budget workshop pretty, pretty quick, because, uh, we're addressing the things that we, we really feel is imperative to maintain the service delivery that we've, the services and the delivery of those services that we've come to enjoy as a public here. Me being a part of that, all of us being a part of that. So I guess that's the, the moral of the story is that there's more coming down the, down the road. I think it's the exact proper place. We do need to circle back to what our compensation philosophy is, what our administrative pay plan is. We do need to reexamine that, because I've been here six years, uh, you know, others have been here longer. Our ranges mean nothing. Just very bluntly, they mean nothing. There's no way, objective way for our staff to know how they progress through their ranges. Whether that be merit, whether that be another strategy we come up with, they're just there in case we need to recruit the position. So that comprehensive, uh, comp and class study or benchmarking or whatever, you maybe through the personnel and finance committee want to see there to follow up on that SAP item really needs to come back in, into the discussion, but we can't wait. Uh, we, and again, just lastly to reiterate, you know, we, we can't just look at pay. Uh, we talked a lot about how we can further distance ourselves, uh, and really what's our, what's our, kind of our, uh, what, what is our reputation out there? So paid time off, we know our paid time off or non-reps is, is a struggle. Uh, we know that because every time we fill a position, we increase it to the ten-year service mark. So let's kind of cut through that and, and get out an offer, uh, what, what the marketplace is telling us is more fair. Um, we took some strides and we have parental leave policy. Not a lot of communities do that. We should revisit that. So there's a lot of strategies, uh, really to, to maintain ourselves, uh, as, as a, as a great reputation and a great place to come work, uh, where we can, we can stand out a little bit and be known for that. So I'll shut up now.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Not for shutting up, but for the explanation.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Max, for that report. Um, turn it over to council.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, if you, there were a couple of comments you made in the personal finance committee meeting that I don't think you mentioned tonight that I think is important. One was, uh, we, we had an employee leave over a mere seven dollars difference in salary, I believe, and, and you would not think that that would happen.
Seven bucks an hour.
Seven dollars an hour, yes. And, and the fact that, you know, you talk about poaching, you know, and, and I think she, I think the employee had, had some drive time to get to the new job, but still it was, it was more. And the other comment was, uh, or that you made was even with the, the increase in workload that the ASA pool has, the, the ability of them to, uh, fine tune their duties and, and, and kind of make, finally make things work, that they're able to absorb all that, that extra workload. And even with what we were paying them, they still sucked it up and, and did that extra work. So now we're kind of righting the ship a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're doing what's fair and these are, uh, this is just where we started. Uh, we knew they're glaringly low co- in, in comparison. We had a hunch. Uh, we didn't address it. We were waiting for the study. This, we were directed not to go forward with a comprehensive study at this, at this time. Uh, so we started where we thought we could make the most impact, and that really is the, the work that these groups of people do. Again, not to diminish and make value judgments. Every position in this city is critical. That's the box we're in as management right now, picking and choosing winners and losers. So we're gonna get around to everybody, but there, it also may be that the data given for your position justifies where you're at right now. And we have, they have to be prepared, uh, to, to, to understand that too, that just because we didn't increase, it doesn't mean we didn't look at it. So we're gonna go through this as methodically as possible, knowing it's very difficult. We're not gonna please probably anybody, uh, during this process, because it's not as understandable as a third-party objective analysis to, 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 to do, to, to go forward. Um, I would, uh, be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, we have a new human resource manager coming on board next, uh, late next month. Has a lot of experience with this type of stuff, so, um, you know, hopefully we can, we can, uh, benefit from her knowledge a- as well. But yeah, I mean, we have a great group every, we have great groups everywhere. Our dispatch is, uh, really, uh, top-notch. Our ASA pool, uh, has gone through a lot with changing to this new building and a lot of attrition. We have a, we have a really solid core right now of a team and, you know, we just really like to keep it that way. That's the whole, uh, that's the whole philosophy is, uh, making sure that we are being fair. Uh, so, you know, we can have these people here as long, giving us their time and talents as possible. Um, that's our retention strategy. Be fair with pay and then distance yourself with the other stuff, like our workplace culture here and some of the other, uh, things that we do to provide a, a good work-life balance. I'm wearing jeans today, so that's out there. To a council meeting, haven't done that ever. I, I was just lazy actually today, so.
Uh, Greg?
Um, first off, not to disagree with Alderman Kirkowski, but when he said somebody left for a mere seven dollars an hour, I clearly don't make enough in my full-time job, because seven dollars an hour is, is quite a good chunk of change, I think, and no offense to my full-time job. I would definitely leave if I found a job for seven dollars more an hour somewhere else. Um, but just looking at the, the analysis, um, obviously an organization that prides itself on, on the, uh, the staff that we do have, looking at the differences, starting with, uh, dispatch, I think the dispatch numbers are, are pretty bad enough to see the, the disparity there. But when you start looking at the administrative staff and the accountant, and you're seeing differences in the twenty-six, twenty-seven percent um, range, it's, it's kind of embarrassing as an organization. Um, and not only when compared to the five other cities that were used in this study. Um, not only were you the lowest, when you're looking at the mid, the mid and the max rates. Um, it's, it's not just cents per hour lower than the lowest. It's dollars per hour lower than the, than the lowest of all of those. So I think this is well overdue. Um, obviously there's a, a tricky balance between being responsible financially with, with tax money, but, um, I think in an organization that is trying to keep the best employees that they can, that this is well overdue.
Thanks.
Uh, just to confirm, in our discussions at the personal finance committee meeting, this upgrading of salaries and wages, that'll affect twenty, twenty staff members, is that correct?
Yes, so, uh, the intention is that the ordinance, uh, should the com- common council pass, uh, would be effective the first full pay period after adoption. So if the council so chooses to approve it tonight, uh, new rates would go into effect May twenty-nine.
Just to add on to that, because I know, uh, the context of the conversation you were talking about, you know, hitting groups of employees. Uh, we hope that even with these kind of more immediate actions, we take over the next several meetings, uh, that we would impact eighty to a hundred non-represented employees. And when you, when you take out your, your represented, uh, I didn't know, did you look at that number to- today? Um, where a target is like one eighty, something like that? So we, we, you know, we've, a- all of those not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, we're hopefully gonna be able to get halfway there with these more swift actions and then we can be a little more methodical, uh, moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Danny. Um, it just out of our discuss- discussion on personnel, I think Andrew and Max, I think framed it pretty well. You know, Greg, I think recap what you said, we're, we have to balance here that being stewards of the community's resources and tax dollars they've, they've committed to paid this community, but they're also, the other side of that is actually you have to be stewards of the, the delivery of services that the city provides to our, to our residents. So, and I think, you know, the, the data we've seen here shows that we're behind the eight ball on that, uh, given how flat this organization is, you really see where your continuity of service really struggles when you're having transitions, you know, chiefs have talked about the, the, uh, the problem in dispatch for those, those communities around us, a regular, and given the burnout and the turnover and those, there's organizations, those jobs are readily available. They open regularly, so your people can flee at any time, given the disparity in wages you see. And then also at the ASA pool, I mean, they're the, they're the customer-facing side of our community. They deal with people every day, all day. They can make a bad impression, they can make a good impression. So, uh, to keep folks that you value and trust, you gotta make sure you're in the marketplace with a fair wage. And I think we've, we've seen we're, we're, we're way out of line here and this is a, a good first step in addressing that need and hopefully building the continuity that we're all gonna strive to put in place and keep in place moving forward.
All right, thank you, Ken. Chris?
Uh, the other thing, I would say, uh, Max, thanks for starting this process and, um, it's definitely long overdue. We just, uh, need to move forward with making sure that, uh, do our assessment on the rest of the organization as, uh, as timely as we can. So thank you for starting it.
Um, I'll just keep it really short before we go to a motion. Uh, I agree with everything that's really been said here and Max and Andrew kind of summed it up. Uh, this is an investment in the city. Our greatest asset is our employees. We do a lot of really good things here in Oak Creek. We ain't afraid to say that. And that really falls with the employees and the assets we have. Um, their hard work has made us successful. No doubt about it. We have very few tools coming from the state to help us. That's why we've been in, in a growth mode. We've been fortunate. So we can compete. So think about yourself as a sporting entity. Uh, you gotta retain that talent. You gotta pay for it if you want to compete and be there. I think we've done very well with that and that's a tribute to our assets, which is our employees. So, um, we have fallen behind on that due to some of the restrictions going on and, and things that have been put down. We've been fortunate to maintain services, but it's getting to the point where we can't continue to do those services without the skills. Pay for those, so, um, hopefully we will get it all right over time. It's gonna take a little bit. This is the first step and I applaud personnel and finance for really taking this head-on, because we really can't wait. Summed it up fast. Um, it's a new, new environment out there to compete with employees and talent. And, uh, if we're gonna remain one of the leaders in southeastern Wisconsin, we gotta do our part and it starts with taking care of our own. With that, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll now shut up. And, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, motion on eighteen.
We'll move to approve ordinance three zero four three fixing the salary and wage ranges, salaries, wages and allowances for certain full-time and part-time non-represented positions for the year two thousand twenty-two.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Item nineteen, uh, consideration of a motion to designate the Now Media Group, the parent company for the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel's South Now Edition, to serve as the official city newspaper for the next twelve months. We do this year in and year out. We do have to have a publication where we put our public notices in and so forth, and then Now is our local paper. So is there any conversation, comments? What's up? Usually there's a comment. Um, there's no discussion, motion please.
We'll move, uh, to designate Now Media Group to serve as the official city newspaper for the next twelve months.
Roll call.
Elderperson Marshall? Aye. Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Okay, I think we got them all. Yeah. Little illegal. We are, we are obligated to do something like that, so. Um, item twenty is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's citizen appointment as listed. That's for the tourism commission. It's a one-year term for Melissa Rasm. Uh, questions, comments about the appointment? Feel she'll be a good addition there? Um, if there's no discussion, motion?
We'll move to concur with the mayor's citizen appointment as listed to the tourism commission.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And we will now get into Public Works and Utility and that's consideration of a motion to reject all bids received for the Forest Hill Manor Water Relay Project. And with us is Brian Johnson. Hey, Brian.
Hi there.
Thanks for the wait.
Actually moving right through here. Um, so this is for the Forest Hill Water Main Relay Project. Uh, this is, uh, Verdev, Griffin and Valbeth that we were, uh, proposing to relay some old cast iron pipe, um, in the city. Uh, set this out to bid. We got four bids back. The low bid was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars roughly. And our budget for the project was seven hundred thousand, so we're significantly over our budget. In working with engineering, um, trying to meet the, the board's request of we want the payment to look as nice when we're done with the project as we'd, as it does before the project, we were looking to reservice the, the whole road with this project. Um, staff feels that there's some ways that we can do this next year, um, try and get this into the asphalt paving budget and, or paving program and share some of those costs with that project and get the, the quantities up to get a higher higher number, so the prices go down on the asphalt costs and we can save some money there. Um, hopefully the supply chain evens out a little bit as well. We're having a lot of difficulties getting parts and materials and seeing significant increases in those costs. So our, uh, objective now is just to reject these bids and we'll rebid this out this fall and try construction next year. With that, we will have Howell Avenue under construction next year as well. So there'll be a lot of work in kind of a small area next year, but that's our goal.
Questions for Brian, comments? And probably a wise move, uh, hopefully the mains hold up. I have, they're almost sixty years old. They're probably some of the oldest in the city.
They are, and we have had, uh, a lot of issues with those in the past, so get another year out of them.
Okay, um, there's no further questions, uh, motion please.
We'll move to reject all bids received for the Forest Hill Manor Water Relay Project.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item twenty-two is consideration of a resolution approving the Broadcare Development Agreement with Broadcare Oak Creek LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at four forty-one West Ryan Road. Matt?
Good evening, council. Matt Sullivan, City Engineer. Uh, before you, it's a resolution, um, for the development agreement for Broadacre at four forty-one West Ryan Road. Um, within the development agreement, it covers the responsibility of the developer, which includes funding requirements, sequencing and construction and plan preparation. Um, if you have any questions?
Questions for Matt? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Yeah, we did see they intend to kick off construction, assuming this approval shortly.
That is correct. On June first, they'll be closing on the property and within two weeks, they'll be starting construction.
We'll then, um, move to approve resolution one two three three one to zero five one seven two two approving the Broadacre Development Agreement with Broadacre Oak Creek LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at four four one West Ryan Road.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall? Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
And item twenty-three is community development and it's consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Mark Verhalen for the property at five hundred East Oakwood Road. Doug?
Thank you. The proposal is, uh, for the subdivision of the property at five hundred East Oakwood Road into three lots. The first containing the existing house would be a little more than a half an acre. Lots two and three would be four tenths of an acre, all of which conform to the zoning district regulations. Uh, the staff has reviewed the, or CSM has recommended their approval, as has the planning commission. So the motion before you would be to approve the resolution approving CSM for the property at five hundred East Oakwood Road.
Uh, questions, comments? Seeing none, motion?
We'll move to approve resolution one two three three zero dash zero five one seven two two approving a certified survey map submitted by Mark Verhaelen for the property at five hundred East Oakwood Road.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item twenty-four is consideration of a motion to approve the construction of a sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. Doug?
Thanks. Good evening. We're actually going to hold this one at the request of the Parks and Recreation Commission. They wanted to be present to present this to the common council and we obliged that. So this will be coming back to the council at their June meeting.
Okay. We have to motion on that. So if we can. Is it two weeks out?
Seven?
Second?
Seven.
So if we can have a motion please to hold.
Lorik moves to hold item number four. Construction of a sand volleyball court at Willow Heights Park at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars till the meeting of June seventh.
Second? Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
And item twenty-five is consideration of a motion to approve the changes to the athletic field rental policy to allow games and other long-term ongoing activities to occur at Johnstone Park, Meadowview Park, Oakleaf Park, Shepherd Hills Park and South Hills Park. Doug?
Thank you. For the past several months, and I actually look back and it was, I think as early as February of last year, the Parks and Recreation Commission has been considering changes to its athletic field rental policy that would allow neighborhood parks to be used for games, for organized sports, particularly baseball. So the discussion is always centered around the benefits of making those selected facilities available for additional community usage versus the challenges of utilizing these neighborhood park facilities, which in most cases were not designed to bring people in from outside the neighborhood for competitive games or tournaments. So in recognition of those challenges, the Parks and Recreation Commission staff did seek the input of the older people for which some of these neighborhood parks were located. That varied across some of the districts. But using that input, the following neighborhood parks were identified as appropriate for these types of activities with certain additional considerations. And those were Johnstone Park, which is in the Cedar Hills neighborhood, Shepherd Hills Park, which already does have some competitive play taking place at it, Oakleaf Park, which is just west of Target, South Hills Park, which is just north of Ryan Road, west of the freeway, and Meadowview Park adjacent to Meadowview Elementary School. Now, when I mentioned some additional considerations, for instance, for Johnstone Park, both Johnstone and Meadowview are joint developments in connection with the school district who owns the school facility and the city, Jason Park. So with those instances, it was requested that the school district approve the use of Cedar Hills Elementary School parking lot and restrooms or allow additional restroom facilities to be placed on park grounds. And that even though there is more than one field in Cedar Hills, that only one of these fields be used for the purpose at that time and that will be further limited to two games per weeknight and six games per weekend day. And would be limited to games only without the use of these for tournaments. So similar to Johnstone, Meadowview would also require approval by the school district, excuse me, for use of their parking lot and restroom facilities again, or allow portable restroom facilities be used. There were no facility usage restrictions being requested for Meadowview Park. So, as was the case, given that most of these facilities were designed as neighborhood parks, they weren't designed for competitive use by tournament teams, what have you. It is entirely likely that these facilities will require additional, albeit limited investments, to bring them up to competition standards. And ideally, those investments decisions would be made part of a capital improvements program that would come through the council at some point as part of the budget process. And for a lot of those improvements, that will still likely the case. But remember that there are impact fees that are available for use on the park system. And should there be the opportunity to utilize impact fees for these purposes, we will certainly explore those options as well. Finally, we would monitor the use of the neighborhood park activities and evaluate those on an annual basis to make sure that the system is working, right? So that, you know, the impacts that we are planning for using these facilities for out-of-neighborhood activities don't overwhelm the neighborhood and we'll be continuing in contact with the older people for the district in which those parks are located to make sure that the use of those parks is consistent with the residents and the district's standards for what they feel should be allowed in those particular neighborhood parks. Now with that, I know that we have a member of Parks Recreation Commission with us this evening. I don't know Steve if you plan to present or not, or if you want to make some comments? I guess that'd be a no. But certainly a topic which has received a lot of discussion lately. I think we've come to a workable solution that allows for the limited use of those facilities. Still allows the older person for the district to have a great deal of input in structuring if and how those park facilities would be used.
Okay, go ahead. Resident or Parks Commission?
Name and address.
Anyhow, Steve Bouch, thirty-two sixty-four East Lindy Lane. Guess I've been up here before, probably years ago, talking about the need for fields in the city for these teams, tournament teams, kids of Oak Creek playing baseball in Oak Creek. My kids have been there. We've done that. We've had to play games in other cities besides Oak Creek, which is a shame. Taking this step, we'll actually get more kids of Oak Creek playing baseball in the city of Oak Creek, which I think is definitely needed. I think it's a small price for that. Again, play baseball, I mean, you're playing home games technically in Franklin. We played home games considered in other cities and to me, that's just not right. So, I think it should be considered and I think it's a good step in the right direction. Thanks.
Questions, comments?
I have a comment. Alderman Dukniak, third district. I just want to acknowledge the city staff and two members of the Parks and Recreation Commission that are here this evening for presenting an action plan. This has been a process, Steve, you know that. And there finally is something that has been presented to us at the council level that addresses a recreational need in our community. How do I know that? Phone calls. I don't have any children in baseball, but it's amazing. The group that I guess participates in or is part of organized baseball in our community wants it to be known that there's a need out there and that need should at least be listened to or addressed. I think we're at that point today. So, that change in language is going to allow for two more parks that will allow organized activity. I thank my two colleagues on the council whose districts will be affected by this. Fifth district and the second district. Third district already has parks that are allowing for organized league play. There has been an offer from the Oak Creek School District in regards to equipment for some of, some of the upgrading of some of the parks. I don't know how that's going to be handled or even considered. Feedback on that?
I can chime in. I think this isn't really about the investment because it's a relatively minor investment to enable the benefits to be had. So I know there was some offer of some fencing. I don't know if the fencing is gonna work or not. I'll leave that to the parks, the parks supervisor to determine if it's worthy or whatever. But certainly until we get into, you know, any major field upgrades, whether that be drainage issues or anything along those lines, which I'm not able to speak to, you know, some fencing, some portable, some portable toilets should not be the major cause of concern here. It's really the traffic. And it seems like such a relatively minor thing and this was discussed for a long period of time and the changes are relatively minor, but in the policy, but you know, this has been talked about probably in different iterations over Doug's career many, many times. And it's been tried and it's been, the neighborhoods have been asked. And there are negative impacts for those that reside immediately adjacent. But, you know, we think it's worth a shot. Certainly there's still control there for renting the field frequency in times. The host alderman, I think this is a good way to pilot this and it's not about the capital investment. I don't think the decision turns on that. I really think it's about trying this out and some potential headaches. I just, is it, is it the council's expectation or the Parks Commission, their expectation that games be readied for this year? Or fields be readied for this year? Or are we totally planning for?
Some of the park commission meetings that Alderman Kirkowski and I were at, it would be almost impossible to implement that this season. It would most likely be put into effect for next year. Were you of that understanding?
I asked the question because I was thinking through my mind that I'd be getting a call from Steve tomorrow saying, when can we mobilize the troops? And I would have been like, well, is that what we meant? So I thought I'd just bring it out tonight and get some direction.
For Leah Schreiber Johnson, ninety twenty-four South York Court, Chair of Parks and Rec. I would say that it's the Parks and Recreation Commission's understanding that this would be something that would be worked into the staff schedule in a reasonable way and one that allowed for budgets to be analyzed and reasonably applied. So I don't think there's any expectation that we're gonna start scheduling games next week. I think we'll let the council and the staff guide the ideal schedule.
Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, first district. I want you to mark the tape tonight. I agree with Steve Bouch on what he said tonight. The, you know, my perspective as, as y'all know, I umpire baseball. And I can tell you that I think the age level of the kids that are gonna be playing would probably be seven to twelve-year-olds generally. I don't know if you'd get ninety-foot fields out of any of these. So you're talking seven to twelve-year-olds. And I know from experience that, you know, South Milwaukee Junior Rockets playing, South Milwaukee, the Carahay, St. Francis Lake, Lakesiders, I think they are, they're playing Carahay. Franklin Crew in Franklin and Oak Creek Zone at The Rock. So, you know, bringing them into Oak Creek would be great. And as a parent, it's seven, eight, nine-year-old baseball players in a community park with the excitement that those level of kids bring. You know, I, it's, I mean, when a seven-year-old hits the ball, everybody gets excited on both sides of the field. You know, because you got nine kids all running out for the ball. But it's just a, you know, they're learning how to play. So it's just a good thing to have them, those age levels in the community parks. And then as they get older and the twelve-year-olds and, you know, when they play pretty decent ball at that age. So, it's a good idea.
Anybody else? Greg?
I'd just like to start out by saying my son does play baseball. His team won today. He does play for a team outside the city unfortunately. Not for lack of us wanting him to play locally for a team here. It just feels like there was some restrictions on availability in the area. So hopefully this would open it up a little bit. I did support it for the Johnson Park and the Cedar Creek area. The concern over traffic was definitely a thought. I know that it was discussed for league games and not necessarily for a tournament. Some of the tournaments can get very large. So I don't see that the parks would have the facilities to host a full tournament or anything. I can't imagine that the traffic for a couple league games would be any more than parent pickup and drop-off at some of the school areas. I know the traffic does get pretty crowded around that time. The only other concern would be parking. And I, I guess I'm under the impression I'm hopeful that, at least in the Cedar Hills area, that people attending baseball games in that area would be able to park at the school if it's after-hours weekends. And there wouldn't be any type of enforcement action taken if they are parking in the school parking lot. So.
I can address that, Alderman Lorik. I've had discussions with representatives from the school district and they have given a verbal approval for the use of those lots. And I guess I don't know what the administrative route would then be if a contract or-
Get it in writing.
Right. An agreement to be signed.
Sure.
They have, they've given the okay for the use of those lots.
Yeah, it's good to see this thing finally moving forward after what, from my discussions with friends in the community has been a very tortured history. So I appreciate that obviously. And just as we see item twenty-four, this particular use doesn't necessarily address the whole community, but it addresses a decent part of the community that we can look at. It's an investment in part of that community. So it's good to see it moving forward. I know it had some recent fits and starts and some misunderstandings, but we've gotten past that, the discussions where Andrew is, there's funding available to get these up to par and get them using. And I think it's high time we get after it, so.
I would agree. I'm glad to see it move forward and I mean Cedar Hills has been discussed already. It is a pinch point there. We have traffic issues going on. I think we're getting some speed tables down there at those roads. It is important that we have access to clear parking. I guess my only other question is, and I know it's not set, but the rental fee should be set probably for the cost of setting up the field for what it taxes. Jeff went, or I would imagine going forward and it's probably a different discussion. Everything we do, whether it's inspection, whatever, we try to cover our own costs. I imagine that's gonna play into it as well. Has that been talked about?
It has been talked about, but you're right. I mean, that's something that has to be. I mean, any changes to the fees would have to come back to the council view of the fee ordinance anyway.
Otherwise, nice to see it moving forward. I'm glad. There's no further discussion? Ken, you got something?
Oh, I just. I'd be happy to make the motion. The Dukniak moved to approve the changes to the athletic field rental policy to allow games and other long-term ongoing activities to occur at Johnstone Park, Meadowview Park, Oakleaf Park, Shepherd Hills Park and South Hills Park.
Lorik will second. Roll call.
Alderperson Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
And item twenty-six is the license committee. I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody has had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? All right. Seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two License Committee Report. And Dukniak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item twenty-seven is our vendor summary report. You'd all take a look and if you have questions, feel free to speak up. If there are no further questions, comments on the report, motion please.
We'll move to approve the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two vendor summary report in the amount of seven hundred twenty-two thousand eighty-seven dollars twenty cents.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And very quickly, before we adjourned, Farmer's Market opened last week. Very successful. We had a beautiful Saturday for that. It was very crowded. I spent a little time down there, as did the city administrator I've seen down there. So, if you can get out there and discover that, explore it. So if you can get out there and discover that, explore it. We opened up early this week. Again, the vegetables will be coming, but there's plenty to see and do there. And then Sunday, we have Guzy's Walk Run down at Lake Vista Park. Chris, you want to plug it?
Sure. Right now, May twenty-second, we have a race starting at eight o'clock with the guest speakers, and then the race will here off at nine o'clock. Also wanted to thank everybody from city staff and also sponsors, large and small. We really have had a great response to the sponsorships and support along the way. So thanks again because it means a lot, and I know that all of the money is going to the right cause of HGSA. So, thank you.
Excellent. So if you have some time Sunday morning, go down there, get some exercise, and help a good cause. With that, if anybody has anything, please speak up. If not adjournment, please.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
All right. Night, everybody.